June 25, 2020. I will ask all staff to mute themselves so I can unmute.
All and have the crazy call the role.
Unable to. Okay, here we go. I was unable to unmute myself. Sorry. Okay. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder Abbas is present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
She's authorized absence.
Absence. Alda Skidmore. Alda Hennig.
Present.
Alda Hennig is present. Alda Tenny. Alda Tenny. Here. Here. Alda Tenny is present. Alda Campbell?
Here.
Alda Campbell is present. Alda Bedar?
Present.
Alda Bedar is present. We got quorum.
Thank you. Now we will have the facilitator read the instructions.
Okay, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair, clerk, and technical facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, please utilize the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Carter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And do we have anyone listed for a public comment?
Yes, actually, we have, um, Sally DeBro who is, yeah, we have, uh, one for, I, uh, yeah, I guess item two. She said she's in support, but does not want to speak. And we have two registered for.
For item four. Thank you. So we will go to, um, item number three, disclosures and refusals. Does anyone have any disclosures or refusal? Okay. We're gonna move on to presentation. So item number four, do we have anyone registered to speak on item four before we go into the presentation?
Yes, we have Jake Bagot, uh, Executive Director of United Health Services at UW Madison wishing to speak. And we have Robin Langton who's in support and does not want to speak, but is available to answer questions.
Okay. Let's, let's go with, um, Jake. Is Jake on the line?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, President Carter. Um, and thank you for providing this opportunity to offer some public comments. As, as I said, my name is Jake Baggett. I serve as the Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Health and Wellbeing and Executive Director of University Health Services. This is work that I've been doing for over 35 years on three campuses within communities. An important part of the University Health Service mission is to support the public health and well-being of the campus community of approximately 65,000 individuals. What's clear is that the well-being of the UW campus is inextricably connected to the well-being of the Madison community and Dane County. Throughout this pandemic, I've been very impressed with the leadership exhibited by Madison and Dane County in particular, as it relates to the work carried out by Public Health Madison Dane County. Janelle and her colleagues have been continued to be highly collaborative, offering both counsel and critique. The Forward Dane Plan is in fact one of the most cogent and informed plans that I have seen. The strategy and associated metrics in this plan have helped guide the public health response, and that has helped mitigate the effects of the pandemic for our community. Our community and our campuses and our campus are better prepared to weather the pandemic because of this type of leadership. Of course, we continue to learn more through our experiences and that of others. I want to reinforce the continued wisdom of using best practices, science, and relevant national and community data to guide your efforts. UW, of course, remains committed to working alongside you and our business community partners for our collective well-being and success. Thank you for this opportunity to share those thoughts.
Thank you. And, um, crazy, Robin Langton?
Uh, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. And before we start with the presentation, I just want to let the members know that I will be leaving the meeting and Alder Abbas will become the Chair of the meeting. Um, I will be leaving the meeting in about 15, 20 minutes or so. Thank you very much. And we'll go on to number four. Um, what Janelle and staff update from the Public Health Madison Dane County Director?
Good evening. Um, so I will be leading, uh, thank you for having me here to talk about all the work that we've been doing for the past five months. Um, I will be giving you, uh, what started as a brief, uh, presentation and slide deck and has grown to about 20, so, uh, slides, but I'll try to run through that quickly and, uh, we'll ask my colleague and our data lead Kat Grande to jump in as well, um, uh, to answer any questions. So if I could share my screen with you. Do I have permission to do that?
Yep, uh, there should be a share screen button at the bottom.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was enabled. So. Let me just make sure I have that up right. Apologize with three screens. Sometimes I'd, uh, never sure if I'm sharing the correct one. So do you see a? What do you see right now?
Not at the moment.
Nothing at the moment. Now what?
That was correct. It's correct.
Okay. Great. So.
Actually, it's a Windows background.
Oh, I'm sharing the wrong screen. I'm sorry. Let me, oh, let me try that again. I do this every time. I apologize. We pull the Zoom screen to a different one. Minimize that. Share screen. Okay, do you now see?
COVID-19 response is what we're seeing now.
Okay, great. Okay, so you know why we're here. Um, and I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a uh, past, present, and future. So we, um, had our first case on February 5th. We had the 12th case in the nation. Uh, we had the benefit of having, I guess you could say benefit, because we were in such a rapid place of learning, uh, CDC onsite with us for, um, one to two weeks. And, uh, in, at that time, and it still continues to evolve, uh, the evidence and the data and the knowledge about, uh, this illness is, is rapidly evolving. When they were here, we were learning things that were changing over the course of the day. I would say that pace of change in knowledge is not quite, um, that rapid, but it is still quite rapid. So we had our first case February 5th. We had our second case, uh, March 10th, and we are now, unfortunately, um, as of today, we are over 1,300 cases in Dane County. Um, I want to just start with a little bit of data and center ourselves. And I realized that this was not updated, um, all the way. Um, but these are, um, the, the metrics from our Forward Dane Plan, uh, what is incorrect on this slide is that our cases per day has increased, uh, significantly in the last two weeks. And we are now in our seven-day average, I believe, at 47 and our, our, uh, 14 days over 30. Um, really important metrics to be able to understand what's happening in Dane County when we think about, um, how do we know what's happening with the scope of illness? The primary ways that we can learn about that is from testing. And, uh, these are what we consider our healthcare metrics. We are, um, this number is going up and up and up daily. And that's good because we are finding a lot of folks who are, um, asymptomatic are coming back as positive cases. So it allows us to kind of get to do our job. Um, some additional healthcare metrics that we are looking at because it allows us to have confidence that, that, um, people are being treated without our healthcare system being in a crisis, um, place with their access to resources or their healthcare staff. And then other additional public health metrics that are very important, uh, metrics that are very important to us are our public health metrics. And these are the buckets of where we know, um, how quickly we can get in touch with folks who are identified as positive and, and then their contacts. And this has been a bouncy metric, uh, not because of our ability or capacity in public health. Uh, this lab timing, reporting, and timeliness and contact tracing metric is tied together. Our contact tracing capacity has been, uh, very good this entire time, but what we've experienced are some delays in the lab that has pushed this, uh, metric lower than what we would prefer. Uh, more recently, we are coming across a red metric in our community spread. And what that means is we know that in the last 14-day period, we're seeing more folks who are unable to identify where they may have, um, come in contact with COVID. And then we look at, um, uh, COVID-like symptoms. And we are able to identify this through a database called Essence. And it allows us to have access to urgent care and emergency department, uh, data and helps identify folks who are, um, in, in those spaces and identifying whether or not they're having some symptom, uh, that's associated with COVID. It doesn't necessarily tell us that they had a positive test. And it may, it could mean, um, it's a warning sign of, uh, increased hospitalizations. Though we haven't seen that, uh, yet. Some big updates as of today, um, and I know we're all paying very careful attention to the data, and I mentioned this earlier. Um, our seven-day average has increased significantly, uh, especially over the course of the last, the results of the, the cases that we're seeing in the last five days. We are now up to 47 cases per day when we take that out on average and 31 over the, uh, the full 14-day period. So we're seeing a lot more, um, testing. Uh, we are seeing bumper days at the Alliant Energy Center. On, uh, Monday, we had an eight-hour day and we had over 1,500 folks who came through. That was a, a record. On Tuesday, there were over 2,100. So, uh, people are aware, um, and they are using that site and we are identifying, um, individuals, uh, with positive, uh, results. And that allows us to kind of set forth and do our job in that contact tracing and investigation. We look at a bunch of other data as well. Um, we call these process measures. Here's a little snapshot of what we're seeing when we look at all the data. We're seeing at 19 folks, 19% of individuals are associated with a known outbreak. An outbreak is anything more than one. Um, for almost half were identified through their participation at the community test site. Uh, this number has come down a little bit, but 17%, uh, we were at about 20. Were asymptomatic or presymptomatic when we interviewed them. And we were able to reach 91% of folks in the time that we wanted to. Additionally, what's very important, when we do our job, we're getting more folks to go in and get testing. And 25% of the people who are, um, getting tested are identified in contact, context to an already known case. Again, as I was just saying, this is one of those, uh, the, the process measures, uh, the lab samples, we are able to get, um, results back and identify folks within 24 hours, 83% of the time, and in contact with folks, um, within two days for symptom onset. I'm sorry, to a specimen collection date. So this is good that we're getting people in early. Um, another really important piece that we are paying attention to is what's called the R-value, which is the average number of secondary cases, uh, caused by an infected individual. I think we are the only health department in Wisconsin who has this, uh, skill and capacity to do this work. Um, and, uh, what we're, what this means is how many people does any one person, um, potentially infect? And that number is going up and more increasing, uh, more recently, it's increasing, um, a bit more rapid, rapidly. According to the CDC, uh, there's a, it's defined as a slow increase as 1.2 and a rapid increase as 1.8. Just a couple of days ago, we were at 1.1. We're now at 1.34. We don't really want to get to that, um, overly rapid, uh, place. And as you may, um, we've been talking about, uh, we are seeing in Dane County, what we are seeing happen, um, nationally and in other communities in the state. We are having a higher percentage of folks, uh, young folks, uh, identify as positive and we are able to identify what's happening in order to be able to see those results. Unfortunate that we are having the same experience. Um, you know, I just wanted to center with the work that we've been doing since the beginning. Uh, as I was saying, we are in a five-month emergency response in Public Health Medicine Dane County. Uh, the first case in, uh, the United States was identified in, um, mid-January. We, uh, kicked off our incident response team almost immediately after we heard of that and, uh, have been, uh, this is the timeline of all the different events with the number of the cases and the orders, um, and different criteria that we have been using to move forward and be able to minimize the risk of transmission in Dane County. What's missing on this timeline of events is the order that we just issued, uh, right as we were about to, uh, start this meeting, um, which is order number six, and it's an amendment to our Phase Two order. And that was the result of the data that we were seeing and the behaviors and the, uh, the ability to identify where, uh, what's going on and driving the rate of increase right now. And that's largely related to, uh, folks engaging in a lot of, uh, social behaviors that is not supportive of physical distancing. So our amended order number six, um, is going into effect, I believe, at 10 o'clock tonight. And it, uh, will require that there is no standing service to be provided in any bars or restaurants. Everything has to be done in a seated fashion. Uh, private gatherings can be, must be limited to 10 or fewer people. And everyone needs to be physically distanced, um, from the other parties that, um, are in the facility. Again, just a different demonstration of our overall response team. On January 23rd, we had about 10 people on our team. By June 18th, we have about 114. And I think it's important to note that we are only a department of 142.3 permanent FTE. And looking ahead, we know and are in the midst of hiring more folks to support our response. We have limited tools to be able to, uh, respond to COVID-19. We have orders, we have physical distancing, contact tracing, and investigation. And this is just the summary of the orders minus what was launched today. Um, we have testing as one of our, uh, key components of our response, which is super important so that we can identify as many people as possible who are positive so we can follow up, do our contact tracing case investigation, and, um, uh, issue quarantine and isolation directions to them and then, um, keep the, the transmission low, identify where things are happening and where there may be outbreaks in facilities. Uh, testing is currently happening at the Alliant Energy Center. And we anticipate that that, uh, site will be available at least through August, uh, 31st. And we're developing plans so that it can be available through the fall. Testing, um, other strategies, healthcare is providing testing. Uh, we have public health running the Alliant with support from the National Guard. Uh, we are looking to stand up a permanent testing site on this, in South Madison and are about to deploy a series of what we're calling community pop-up sites that are really largely based at looking at the data, uh, data around disparities in outcomes and accessibility to testing and, uh, and getting, uh, more test sites available in different parts of our community, city and county-wide. Uh, again, as I've mentioned a number of times, contact tracing is a very important part of our work. We currently have 36 people doing contact tracing work, 27 support staff, 14 more folks who are starting tomorrow, and an additional 30 in, um, recruitment to help, um, facilitate and provide a little relief to folks who have been working on this for, very diligently, for a very long time. Uh, we have always indicated that we would, uh, review the data to help inform our staffing capacity. This is one of the places that we knew, um, and had always anticipated we would be looking at to, to figure out how do we make sure that we, uh, can do what we need to do in the right amount of time. And other components of the response, uh, that are very important to us is how do we look at data? How do we craft messages and share and communicate to the public and all our stakeholders as, uh, quickly and effectively as possible? In addition to responding to community questions, uh, we have, uh, excuse me. And then answering technical assistance. Um, we have a group of, a team of folks that we are calling our public health liaisons. We have 16 liaisons who are providing support and interacting with 20, uh, different sectors of, um, service delivery throughout Dane County, uh, that range from housing to food security, education, transportation business, uh, emergency management, healthcare, and the list goes on. In addition to our, what we call our public outreach team, who receives and fields questions that come in, um, voluminously by the day, either by phone or by email. And to date has, uh, connected with over 3,200 Dane County residents via phone and email. And our compliance and education team, which is a branch that fits within this, um, these strategies, um, have connected with more than 400, uh, businesses to provide support around the understanding and the need to adhere to the directives in our orders. Um, looking ahead, this was a slide that I actually deleted, so this is not quite the right one. But, um, you know, if we were to move continuously through Forward Dane, um, we would be looking at, uh, continuing to open up. But as we have been indicating today and more recently, we are nowhere near the ability to move to Phase Three of that plan. A lot of questions have been asked more recently and, and since the beginning of how do we know when we, uh, need to move back? Is it as simple as looking at the red metrics in Forward Dane? Or are there other things that we are looking at? There is no, um, uh, guidance or, uh, statistics or evidence at the state level, much less at the federal level around our, what we are calling rebound metrics. Uh, things that we are looking at and, um, having conversations with our healthcare partners around are, uh, what, what seems to be, uh, what are these three in front of you? The burden and the case trajectory? And, um, how well do we know where these, um, increasing cases are, um, where they're happening and can we contain them? So wanted to go by that quickly. Uh, I know that there are probably a lot of questions and happy to answer them. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen if that's all right.
Thanks, Janelle. Anyone have question for the staff? Alda Tenny?
Hi there. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I just had two questions. One, um, are we still considered to be in the first wave of, of this pandemic? And then secondly, um, based upon what I'm seeing here today, i- is it safe to say that any hope there had been that there'd be a, uh, uh, impact on the, on the virus by the weather conditions, um, didn't come about? Like, it, it would seem that with the summer, uh, the prevalence of this virus is just as great. Is that, is that accurate to say?
Thank you. Um, I would say that's accurate if I could answer your questions in reverse. We're still learning. Uh, I don't think we've been through a full year of seasons with this virus yet. And so the evidence is constantly emerging about the impact of, uh, seasonal variation or impact on this virus. So, um, we can make no statements about whether we would see something different, based on a, a seasonality. And I believe, I'm sorry, I lost your first question. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, uh, the first question was whether we're still considered to be in the first wave? Uh, or are we seeing a second wave, like technically, uh, where, where do we stand right now?
Um, I, I think nationally and, and within, uh, Madison Dane County in Wisconsin, we have not come out of that first wave yet, and I don't think we know what to predict in the future.
Thank you. Alda Campbell?
Okay. Thanks, Janelle. Thanks so much for, uh, being here with us at this, like, really hectic time in the course of the disease right now. Um, I have a couple of questions. You went through these numbers really fast, but around the contact tracers, you said you have 36 and then 20-something support staff? 20? Can you say what those support staff do for the contact tracing?
Sure. Um, so our contact tracing support staff are folks who are, uh, looking in WEDs, our Communicable Disease Database, and helping kind of, uh, do a variety of different things by identifying positive and negative cases, pulling those folks out, assigning them, staging them, and, and going through a huge process. I'll ask, maybe ask Kat Grande, who's here with me, who's part of that team, to speak with that in more detail, if, if you don't mind.
Kat, can you please raise your hand?
Can I raise my hand?
Oh, I can see you're on mute. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So that support team is basically what makes, um, the contact tracer is able to follow up as fast as we receive information. So they're, as Janelle said, in, uh, working through the databases, translating information. And then, um, it's also, the data team is also in that support. So anything that helps the, the contact tracing team do their work, um, that's the infrastructure around that.
So, um, on a day like yesterday, day when there was 100, I think 105 cases, are, are e- is each contact tracer doing three cases a day and then having to move on to the next? Or, I mean, as I understand, it's pretty involved work of making relationships with people, talking to them, getting their contacts. I'm just trying to picture how that works with, with the rapid increase in cases.
Yeah, I can take that one. Um, so they are, we definitely had a lot, uh, higher numbers today. So they are adjusting the way that they're doing interviews and, uh, making sure that everyone gets an initial real quick phone call that gives isolation instructions and the most significant information. Then they're gonna circle back and do that more extensive interview. So that's sort of the, the model that has emerged today as people are getting onboarded and hired and trained concurrently and have been all week before the spike too.
So Janelle, you said there's like 14-something and then 30-something. Can you explain what those numbers are?
Yeah, so we are, um, hiring and having 14 new contact tracers join the team tomorrow. And we have in the queue to hire, um, an additional 30, uh, disease intervention specialists, primarily hopefully, um, bilingual folks as well, um, to support our ability to, uh, continue to do the work in a timely fashion that we've been doing so far.
And is any of the, um, Secretary Palm was talking about, their sort of stable of contact tracers they're hiring in addition to the local, um, local departments hiring that could be deployed when there's a spike or an outbreak? Are you having access to them at all or would you, or what's your plan for that?
Um, we have had access to them and we have had to ask them to jump in in different points in time, sometimes to just relieve our team who's working seven days a week, uh, to give a little bit of, um, of, of backup there, but that's happened in very minimal ways. Um, and then I, I, I will be honest, I don't know if that is something that we did today or yesterday. Um, but I can ask Kat to answer that more specifically.
Yep, yep. So far, we've mostly been, um, calling in DHS support on weekends. Um, but we have called for some support in the last day and today.
Okay, thanks. And then I have, I know we're gonna get another presentation about the, um, demographic breakdown of, of cases next. But I'm wondering if in your data, um, you're seeing workplace-related cases? If that's information you're getting? And if those workplaces are like service industry workplaces? Are you seeing, um, that rise since businesses have opened?
Kat, do you want to take that?
Sure. We see small clusters associated with workplaces that have been pretty steady throughout the epidemic. I wouldn't be comfortable saying that there's been a notable increase in workplaces since Phase Two. What we are seeing notably is the increase among young people and behaviors among young people.
Well, in another meeting earlier this work, one of your staff from your department showed data that showed a huge number of Hispanic identifying people, a huge disparity in them being, testing positive, as well as a, and also disparate number of black people, although not as big as Hispanic identifying people. I mean, is that correct? Is that something you're going to talk about in the next, the next presentation?
We are not part of that next presentation. That is accurate demographic data. We do have a blog and race and COVID update that I think was out last week. We are definitely seeing disparities for our Hispanic Latinx population. There is no, and Kat, correct me if the data has indicated otherwise recently, any particular source at this point that we can point to as a place of employment. That said, we know that there are places that perhaps we need to expand access to testing to support people getting tested more robustly.
Okay. And then finally, on those last three potential metrics for putting more restrictions on, when are you going to finalize those? I mean, are those finalized? Do you consider them finalized? And are they going to be related to the phases as already described? Or will they go be a different sort of set of restrictions?
I would say they are near final. We are still wanting to just have a comprehensive conversation with our healthcare partners around those. We have that scheduled for Monday morning. And I think the way that we are looking at it and just, you know, would perhaps largely align with the order, the, I'm sorry, phases of Forward Dane. And as we are constantly learning, there may be ways that we need to be more specific within that, such as the order that we released tonight, given what we know and kind of where the data is showing, who is primarily positive and are having the positive results lately and kind of the places that they are visiting. So. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Aldra Campbell. Next is Aldra Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have a couple of questions as well. My first one is, is there any tracking? Or are you getting any data about completed antibody tests at all?
So yes, we, I think we are watching that. That is not something that, and we are also exploring whether we may, when and whether we may have the opportunity to also be able to offer that. It's not something that's in our kind of cadre of tools right now. But what we know to be true, unless the data has updated recently, and this is why I'm so grateful that Kat Grande is here, who leads our data team, because it takes a team to have, keep the tabs on all the different points of information that we need to accept, access and analyze to make our decisions. But I believe what we're seeing kind of largely around antibody testing is very, very low in Dane County, which means that, and that's given a very kind of limited sample of where folks are getting, having access to that. And what that means is we know that there's not a lot of folks who've been exposed to it so far, right? And how that could create a more susceptibility or vulnerability in our community to COVID since that's a low rate. Kat, would you add anything to add to that?
Yeah, just that we don't have negative antibody tests. That's not something that public health gets. So we don't, we don't have a way of tracking the percentage of people who have positive antibody tests. We just get a number of tests that come in. So we rely on, you know, when there are larger antibody studies happening in the county. That's what we pay attention to.
And I presume like the Red Cross is, because I know that they're starting to offer the antibody testing with people that donate blood at their facilities? I don't know. No? Or?
I believe that to be true. I don't know. We don't, I don't, I can't answer more specifically than that.
Okay. Nope.
That might be. But I can tell you that we are also working with the show, one of the subunit research units at the University of Wisconsin. They, that's part of the state surveillance strategy for antibody testing. They're going to be going to 10 communities around the state on a rotating basis, I believe, over the course of the next year to collect antibody samples to help build a better surveillance strategy from that perspective. They will be in Dane County and we're supporting their site location in South Madison, I believe, at the week of July 6th.
Okay. And then my other, thank you. My other question, I know that all the alders got an email either today or yesterday. Time has a way of, you know, escaping us right now. It doesn't seem to mean a lot what day it is anymore. So I'm not clear what day we got this, but we did get an email about a particular place in the city that was, you know, servers were not wearing masks. They were certainly at way more than 50% of their, of their, their capacity. Is there, I mean, is there anything that you guys can do to like, or like, do you guys, if somebody reports that, do you guys do something? Or is it just kind of like, that sucks?
Yes. I mean, we, part of our liaison and compliance and education team does outreach and education to, when we hear about that, I'm not sure. I personally don't believe that I saw that complaint come in. That doesn't mean that that didn't come into public, to someone in public health, Madison, Dane County. So we do follow up. And what is hard is the compliance check on site is where we have the greatest capacity to make more significant changes and enforcement around the orders by being able to observe that. We're not always in those places to be able to address that in the moment, but do some follow-up there. So that's one of the strategies, I believe, you know, given what we have been seeing over the course of the last five days in particular, where we're having a significant amount, hearing that more and seeing that kind of translate into the cases and the qualitative interviews for contact tracing and them indicating, kind of folks indicating where they've been and what they've experienced in those places, definitely resulted in our order number six that went out at 6:30 tonight or 6:27, that really focuses on those bars and restaurants to maintain that physical distancing and seated service versus standing around at a bar, which it puts folks in closer contact with each other, which is not something that we want to see happen. And those private gatherings where we're hearing a lot of different social gatherings that are happening, that are putting people in close contact with each other as well.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps me a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aldra Martin. Next is Aldra Prestigiacomo.
There we go. Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Janelle, for coming. This is a really great opportunity. I know, like, I, like every other alder's been getting lots of emails about this. And so I represent District D, which happens to be a majority of students in the campus area who, you know, attend UW Madison. And so I guess prefacing my question, you know, I live downtown. I see the packed lines of, you know, of young people, of young people not following social distancing. And I can't help but think that, and you know, this is sometimes a fact that we have to grapple with, is that, you know, it's going to be impossible to fully enforce guidelines for young people specifically. And so I guess kind of my question is, and it's kind of related to UW as well, and I'm curious to find out specifically what conversations PHMDC has been involved with UW? You know, what discussions you were involved, were involved in? And, you know, how, if you were working with UW to create guidelines? And, you know, I'm getting so many emails about this and I'm worried about it myself because I, you know, I live above the KKK and I, like, what are you doing besides investigating right now? You know, businesses near campuses that have been, you know, clearly violating some of these guidelines?
So I think you asked quite a few questions in there. And I will try to center it on the bulk of that, which I think is related to the conversations relationship and planning with the institution, if I can just start there. So I would say we are in very, very close contact with UW on a daily, if not more frequently than that basis. I am aware and have seen and, you know, of the reopening plans and strategies with regard to surveillance. And I think right now we are very, very focused on what is happening with a largely student affiliated, though not in class, student body, who are driving our caseload higher and higher every day and what you represent, so, or just spoke to. So I don't have a more thorough answer about what the response of the institution will be, but I will say that we continue to make them aware and support and encourage strong actions on their, on their behalf, because we are very concerned what's happening now is just a forecast of what could happen when classes start.
So do you factor in, were you factoring in a lot of decisions, knowing that UW is calling back, you know, students to come back to campus? And like, I guess, could you help me understand like how that influenced your, PHMDC's decision to move forward with reopening? You know, knowing all that and the potential for spikes because of it? Sorry for that.
Yeah. I don't think it's a simple answer. I mean, we are definitely paying attention to the population and the data that we are seeing and experiencing in, as we currently have it at hand. And recognizing that there is always kind of different injects that are happening. I would say anecdotally, right, things that we can't plan for all the time are things that we have been hearing around a group of folks who are, haven't been here and are now showing up in Dane County to find housing for the fall, right? And that is driving different behaviors. So I think it is further important and to consider what we are experiencing as we have to make current and additional decisions around how to minimize the risk of transmission by, through physical and social distancing and other preventive measures. So I don't have a clear one-for-one answer for you on that. That is conversations that are happening on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you. I'll probably follow up with more too, but that's, that's my last question about UW. And then my, my final question, I guess generally is more about the direction of PHMDC. And I'm curious to hear how you weigh and consider personal responsibility and individual actions to, you know, follow our own guidelines and ourselves and collective responsibility of the city to, you know, prevent, prevent situations or circumstances where people acting without responsibility could pose a risk to others. So I guess I'm trying to understand where, where you get direction specifically when you're talking about to, you know, open or keep a business closed, because we recognize that, you know, personal responsibility is hard to regulate or, you know, the opposite of that. I guess if that question makes sense.
I think every public health decision we make is looked at from both like, what are the social behaviors? What are the individual behaviors that we can have in place? And what do we want to encourage through different policy decisions that we make? And recognize that often, policy decisions shape social norms that we don't currently have. And I think that is the value and the importance of us having orders that outlines the things that we need to do to minimize the risk of transmission. And we can do those things by putting a policy such as an order in place that puts requirements for preventive measures to be adhered to at the individual and the, kind of the larger community level. And that, that is public health practice, that in a nutshell, where those things are all constantly intersecting with each other and have different interplays on what we're seeing in, in health outcomes, right?
Okay. So I guess kind of what I'm trying to understand is like, you know, an overall decision to move in the direction of reopening rather than, you know, assuming the worst? Has that been, that's just generally, you know, something that public health, you know, a general rule of thumb in public health is to go that direction? Is that kind of what I'm hearing? It's less of a political decision?
I'm not quite sure I fully understand your question. I mean, we are looking at, we look at the best practices, the evidence base that demonstrates what, what are the things that we can do and that are available to us at a person level and at a policy level to address the issue at hand? The issue at hand right now is COVID, right? The tools that we have available to us are few, right? We don't have a vaccine. We don't have a treatment. And we have knowledge that if you're in close contact with other folks, not wearing masks or not doing great hygiene practices in general, that it puts you at a higher risk of illness. And so that's, those are the, that's how we make our decisions, by looking at what is best practice? What's the evolving body of evidence? And what are the strategies that we have at hand to be able to deploy and achieve those, those measures?
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Thanks, Aldra. Next is Aldra Bedar. And I apologize, I lowered your hand before. This is my first time. Sorry for that.
Thank you, Aldra Boss. I'm used to it. I have two brothers. So I had a number of questions and just for disclosure, I know my colleagues know that, but given my work at UW Health, I spend a lot of time around this topic too. So just wanted to say that. And I'm also the co-chair of the Latino Health Council of Dane County. So Janelle, thank you so much for the information. And both, I'll pose this question and you can answer it or Kat, but I want to go back to the topic of disparities that we are seeing and make sure that we talk a little bit more about both the numbers and the specific maybe interventions and initiatives that you are deploying to try to address those disparities. So I think as I looked this morning, the percentage again roughly was 15% of positives were Black and about same 15% Latinx. So double pretty much the population of Dane County in the positive rates. So could you talk a little bit more about specific work that you're doing around that?
Yeah. One, we are always trying to assure that we have a culturally responsive workforce, right? And we recognize that that is something that is a constant, an ongoing goal of ours, so that we have more bilingual staff available to us to support that. And when we don't, unfortunately, or unfortunately, we use interpreters when we are in contact with folks whose language, first language is not English. And then I would say we are looking at the data to help inform our decisions about how do we make testing more accessible? And that is the, a huge goal of ours. And we recognize that accessible testing is not just based on location, it's based on who and where that testing, I would say, not just based on accessible transportation, I should say, right? It's also based on who is providing the service, where it is located in a way that is comfortable and responsive to the community. And that is one of the primary goals of the community pop-up testing, that we are continuously building a plan of action around to work with different community stakeholders in a variety of different communities of color and looking at data around accessibility of who's getting tested countywide to take testing around the county to, to different places to make it more accessible. I would say those are the primary tools that we have available to us right now. Kat, would you jump in and add anything different? Or additional, I should say?
Just that on the contact tracing standpoint, you know, still being able to offer support for folks who test positive, I think that becomes especially important when we start seeing more and more pronounced, which we're already seeing more and more pronounced racial inequities and, yeah, making it all the more critical to have those supports available because of the compounding factors of racism. And yeah, making it all the more critical to have those supports available because of the compounding factors of racism.
So a follow-up question to that. And Kat, since you have the mic right now, could you, do you have handy the percentages of black and Latinx who are getting tested at the Liant Energy? Or the numbers of people and then compared to the numbers of positives?
Yeah, I was just looking at that earlier today. If you give me a minute, I can find it for you.
Okay. While you're finding it, I'll pose another question. So Janelle, you, you mentioned this community testing site that would be in addition or maybe once Liant closes. The one question that's been asked frequently is like, what the timeline looks like for those? Do you have a, a sense of, of the timeline?
Yes. I believe the first of those will be starting next week in South Madison. I don't have the full schedule in front of me. That has been a constantly evolving target due to a few different factors. One, just the assurance that we have access to the test kits to be able to utilize in those pop-up sites as well as just having a better understanding by the community partners that we're working with as well as ourselves of, of the accessibility of the sites and of the needs of the, of, of our partners with regard to the, the when and how they would like to have those test sites available. We are very flexible and adaptable to that. Some folks want those just on Saturdays. Some folks want those through the middle of the week. We have a core kind of need list of things that we need to have assurances around are available to us to be able to have those test sites available. And, and they're, they're pretty simple things like outlets and inflow and outflow and, and different kind of like logistical and facilities related things. And as well as just working with, with different groups to identify the, the, the time, the everything like that. So we are deploying, starting next week and anticipate that the schedule will continue to grow as we continue to connect with different folks in building that plan.
If Kat doesn't have the answer yet, I can continue asking some other questions.
Don't worry. Kat always has the data answers. Let me get my spreadsheets open. All right. So this is when we last ran it, this was a week ago. I know I have more updated. But the percentage of, Shiva, you were looking, were you looking for percent positivity rates?
Percent positivity rate, correct.
Yes. Among people who are black, it was 3.7% at Liant. Among people who are Hispanic, 6.1%. Those were the highest 2% positives. American Indian or Alaska native, 2.4%. Asian, 1.0. White, 1.1%. Other race, 1.7%.
Great.
Yep.
One, one other question, and I don't know, you know, if you can answer this, but as we're talking about a younger population that you've been mentioning, just want to confirm on record from you two that younger population tends to do better in COVID outcome, meaning not needing hospitalization and not having the risk factors and comorbidities that again, both other at-risk population and that we've seen communities of color have because of the underlying structural racism that creates those conditions. Is that an accurate statement?
Absolutely accurate statement.
So again, although some numbers may be bigger in, in, in certain groups, the outcomes are still worse in, in groups that may have, again, you're seeing a lower increase maybe overall, but that, that are really more at risk because of the other conditions.
Absolutely. We, we recognize and speak loudly in different places. And I will gladly go on record by saying the structural, institutional and longstanding issues of racism are playing out in the way that we are unfortunately seeing disparities in outcomes amongst communities of color in Dean County.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Bedar. Any more questions from the Alders? I do not see any hand raised. I have one question, Janelle. Thank you very much for the presentation. Really appreciate that. So I know I work in, in energy, environment industry. It's hard to forecast, but the number looks really alarming or concerning at least. If this, if we look into the forecast, just looking at the pattern and if this gets worse and worse, have we had a plan to go back to phase one, like, you know, now we have 50% forward Dean County to just reverse and go back, or either we are going to do some modification? What is the rationale behind those modifications? Would, would I have thought about like going back to the forward plan one?
Yes. I mean, those were very real conversations that we had today. When we look at these, what we had referred to as the rebound metrics, I would say if, if, as an example, and, and this is where this is, the data drives us and that we also have to understand the context the data lives in, which makes things a little less clear sometimes, right? The, the order that we pushed out today was largely the result of looking at the case trajectory that we are seeing, which is increasing, it's averaging over 20 in the last, per day over the last two weeks, a significant increase since last week. What focused the order today that we issued was being able to identify through contact tracing kind of the behaviors and the places that are largely affiliated with the higher number of cases that we are seeing and that increase in case count. So those are nuances of how we look at that data. But when we are, I would say, if we are unable to isolate that, that, that would indicate that perhaps it's a different type of order and return to a different and more restrictive phase in the future.
Thanks. And one more question is about if a facility where data is attached and the facility is more prone to not following the guidelines and violating the public health measures, would there are some measures or implementation strategies do you guys have? Like revoking alcohol license, like going to extreme where you can really put pressure on establishment?
I can't speak specifically to all the different things that we could consider, but I would say that those are good examples that we, I think, can be on the table if we are seeing that there are repeat violations in certain specific facilities. So we would likely go to compliance education and issuing of citations, which would result in forfeiture of a certain amount. And I hope that that would be the last of it. And if it continues, we would, we will consider additional, you know, measures, I guess.
Thank you very much. Any other question, Alders? I don't see any other hand raised. Thank you very much. Sorry for the disturbance. Kids are going crazy in this town. So thank, yeah, thank you all for the great presentation. Now I will move to the next presentation. Action item 61020, file, file number five, agenda number five, Racial Equity in COVID-19 Response and Recovery. Gabriela Ortega and Kim Woodley, please. I'm going to unmute. And Kim, can you, yes, here we go. I saw you. Here we go. Great. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for having us. My name is Kim Tana Woodley, Kim for short. And I'm an investigator with the Department of Civil Rights. My pronouns are she, her and hers. And I'm here presenting with Gabriela.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Arteaga and I use she, her pronouns. I've worked at the city at building inspection for almost three years and I'm a core team co-lead.
I forgot to add that I'm a core team co-lead too. So we wanted to come and present the COVID-19 response and recovery questions to you tonight. The co-leads got together in, in April and we wanted to help in some way with teams that were working on COVID-19 related discussions, meetings and so on. And we wanted to have a way of infusing equity and social justice into the city's response with regard to COVID-19. And so we came up with the questions. There are three simple questions. I shouldn't say simple. There are three questions. And this is an abbreviated form of the equity analysis. So the first question that we asked teams to ask each other while working on COVID work is what do we know about the, about how people of color and those most disconnected from systems of power are impacted? And for consideration, who is impacted by, cares about, or is already working on this issue? Have we asked for their perspectives directly? How will we continue to communicate with them in this process? And does the data we're using detail race, non-binary and transgender people? People with disabilities and those experiencing homelessness or undocumented status? Gabriela, do you want to add?
So I guess these, these questions, like Kim said, are a way to center equity in our emergency response. We do have our racial equity tools, as you all know. But co-leads, one of these is a more nimble alternative to those equity tools. And I, I guess I just want to add that it's, we're focusing on, on systems, right? So like historically marginalized communities, like people of color, LGBTQ people, especially black, trans women, people with disabilities, et cetera, are left behind by crisis response. So that's what we wanted to make sure we don't continue to perpetuate in government. Oh, and sorry, sorry, Kim. I guess about the first question for me, it's just, okay, why are we making this? Why do we think this is a problem, you know? Is this just like white people coming into a community and saying like, hmm, this looks like an issue, like let's tackle it? Or is it the community coming to us and saying, hi, we need help with this, like this is what we want from you? So just like, what does the data tell us about whether it's an issue? And what do the people living in these communities tell us?
And, and as an added point, when we're using these questions, we need to take a look around the table at who we're inviting to have, have these conversations as well. Do we have a diverse group of people at the table? Are they representative of community, the communities we're serving? That's very important as well. Okay, question two. Who is the COVID-19 response or lack of response going to help the most? Who would it help the least and who not at all? How can we address these limitations? So not taking action is also a response that will affect populations differently. Gabriela?
Yeah, I guess just to say that, you know, our, our systems and our processes center whiteness. And that's just how it's always been. And we want to disrupt those situations. And I think when we are doing equity response, it, it, it's something to practice, to think about. Who else, who else needs to be here before we can make these decisions? Nothing with us, without us, right? And that can be really hard because if you don't have certain identities, you can't see what those identities would see. So it's a, it's a practice using these questions, trying to kind of think of like, okay, well, how might this affect, you know, the most marginalized people in our community?
Okay. And the last question is, are there ways this COVID-19 response or lack of response could harm specific populations or communities? How can we mitigate these unintended consequences? And that's a very important one. So if, if, I'm not sure if everyone received a copy of these questions, but if you didn't, if you can reach out to Gabriela, myself, or anyone on the co-leads team, we can email them to you. And if you need support in helping to think through these questions, we're available to help as well.
And these questions are for use in any space where you're making decisions. So I, I really encourage people to, no matter what the decision is, look at these questions just to make sure we're not having disproportionately negative impacts on people of color and other marginalized communities. I think one thing that I just wanted to say is this, this isn't supposed to be easy. And you're going to get it wrong. And I think if, you know, as people who are dedicated to the community and dedicated to racial equity work and social justice, we have to come to terms with the fact that we're going to screw it up. And we have to do it anyway. And also, yeah, it's just, I think there, there can be some, an issue with like acting quickly versus acting equitably. And if you have all the, the people that you need at the table and you're including people from marginalized communities, then you don't have to slow down the process and go find them. So that's, that's a plus for, for starting off and with the right foot. I think also something to remember is that when you inevitably do make a mistake and it's not just you all, right, it's just like in general, pause and apologize and listen. And because communities aren't monoliths and one community, like the Latinx community, isn't going to agree, just focusing on the most impacted by the issue and the most vulnerable. So for example, using Latinx versus Hispanic, just because people who are non-binary are much more vulnerable than anyone else in the Latinx community because they can also have these other intersecting identities, right? So like undocumented status and being black. So yeah, focusing on the people who have the most to lose. And yes, again, if you, if you need our help, you know, you can email resjai-co-leads. Give us a call. But again, it's not supposed to be easy to dismantle systems of oppression or to just come up with new ways of thinking and processing, right? Something that San Antonio says is that equity is everybody's job. So that's, that's what I've got, Kim.
Any questions?
Sorry, I was muted this time. Thank you very much for the presentation. Alder Campbell?
Hi, thanks. Can you tell us some which agencies have used this for the crisis response? Who have you sort of walked through this with?
Yeah, that is a great question. So part of the, the nimbleness, and I think that really just means that there's not a lot of process and bureaucracy bogged down with it, is that we're not collecting these, the answers to these questions. Because of accountability reasons, we're not quite sure yet, I think, how to do that. I think the library has started to use it. That's what I was hearing today. Kim, do you know of?
I think the Community Development Division is planning to use it.
Yeah.
So the only two agencies that I've heard of.
Right. But again, since there are so many decisions in so many different places and in small rooms and individual conversations sometimes, I'm not sure how we would track these, but really hoping, I've, I've used really hoping, I've, I've used them with my agency, building inspection, but not like pulling out the sheet and being like, okay, buddy. So I don't know is really, I guess, the best answer.
And, and it's not like, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's not like the racial equity tool. And in as much as you really don't have to write anything down or report anything out unless it's, it's verbal and it's to your team. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Campbell. Next is Alder Bedar.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. I just want to, to thank you, Gabriella and Kim, for this tool. Really great and straightforward. And, and again, I think having these tools that are available to use in a kind of short format for any kind of decision is really important because it's accumulation of the small decisions usually that, that lead to the, the really big, I think, institutional and, and structural outcomes that are inequities and races. So again, I think it's a really good tool. It's a, and I hope that certainly we can embed it in, in the work of as many departments as possible and, and have people really understand that they can use it for any decisions.
Like common council decisions.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question from Alders? I do not see any more hand raised or any questions. So thank you, both of you, for your time and providing such a good information. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're here for any additional questions in the future.
Thanks. With that, I need a motion to adjourn. There we go. Alder Campbell.
Move adjournment.
Alder Bedar, step second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Thanks all. Take care.